Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the meeting. Thank you. Suzanne, would you do roll call, please?
Thank you. Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nakai here. Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Gier.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that takes us to item 3A, which is recognition of a proclamation by the city of Woodland Park declaring June 27, 2024 as Vashold's Family Day. So we have, I think, the entire clan with us this evening. We had a reception outside with the cars and the family and lots of folks came and rode in the old car that Leonard has and had a lot of fun. So thank you all for coming. I, I think that the Vasholds, our family is really our hometown heroes. And so before we read the proclamation, Kristen has a video to play for us. Excellent. All right. I'd like to read the proclamation and then I'd like for the Vashold's family to join me up front. I have a gift for some of you. Please add a photo op. The proclamation Vashold's Family Day, whereas the three generations of the Vashold's family, Leonard, Clint, and Cody, have made significant, successful contributions to the racing community and the Pike's Peak International Hill Climb. And whereas the Vashold's family has won one or more classes on Pike's Peak every year since 1993, the Vashold's family has accumulated 47 wins since Leonard began the legacy in 1978. And whereas Leonard's first PPIHC win came, whereas Leonard Vasholds and his family, Barb, are the owners of Vashold's race. Leonard raced for a record 32 years in the Pike's Peak International Hill Climb with 18 class wins. And whereas Leonard's first PPIHC win came in 1981 in the stock car division, Leonard's winning formula led to 18 division wins throughout his racing career on Pike's Peak. Clint has topped that with his 24 to date and his son Cody has already claimed four. And whereas Clint first tackled Pike's Peak on a motorcycle in 1991 in the open pro division, his first win came in 1993 in the same division. And whereas Clint Vasholds has appeared at every Pike's Peak International Hill Climb since 1992, winning his division on 24 occasions and won King of the Mountain, making him the most successful driver in the history of the Pike's Peak International Hill Climb. And whereas in 2020, Clint Vasholds earned the title King of the Mountain during the 29th PPIHC debut for getting up to the 14,115 foot peak with the fastest time, beating every other competitor by a mere nine minute 35.490 seconds. Did I say that correctly? And whereas Clint Vasholds was recently inducted into the Pike's Peak International Hill Climb Hall of Fame on June 20, 2024. And whereas in 2023, Cody placed first in open wheel, setting a record for speed at nine minutes, 19 second point 192 seconds. I hope that's correct. Whereas Cody Vasholds began riding motorcycles at just two years old, finally competing in his first PPIHC race in 2011 in the motorcycle division. During his eight years racing motorcycles, Cody took home three first place wins and setting speed records with each race. And now therefore, I, Kelly Case, mayor of the city of Woodland Park, do hereby recognize the outstanding achievements of the Vasholds family, including Leonard, Clint, and Cody, for their outstanding achievement to racing and the Pike's Peak International Hill Climb and proclaim June 27, 2024 as Vashold's Family Day. Would you all join me at the front, please? Didn't know if you wanted them to speak, sorry. Oh, would you guys like to say some words for the audience? I'd like to honor you with the city's coin. Welcome.
You want one of these for the picture? Come on, Cody.
I would just like to thank everybody for supporting our family and everything we've done throughout the years. It means a lot. It obviously allows us to keep going with it further and further. Just thanks, everybody, for the support. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely. Born and raised in Woodland Park, seeing a lot. It's just a great place to be born, raised, and come alive. And, you know, our shop is, our shop's in town. We, you know, hopefully help a lot of people out with that that help us go racing. So I do appreciate you guys and have a great night.
Leonard shared with me that there's a couple of errors in the proclamation as far as dates and things. So we're going to get that changed and get the proclamation correct and we'll get that posted. Thanks, everybody, for being. Okay, on to 3B and congratulations, you all. 3B, appointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board. And that I will turn over to Suzanne Leclerc.
Thank you, Mayor Case. This evening, as council knows, when we have openings on boards, the clerk's office advertises for positions. And we have three openings, three terms are expiring as of June 30 on the DDA board. And those are the terms of John Gamilke, Eric Cabrera, and Jerry Good. So we published those, we advertised them in the paper and everything. And the three incumbents that I just mentioned are the three that applied for reappointment. They're here with us in the audience to answer questions. And I don't know if you want to take them one at a time and see what's going on.
You bet. Let's start with Jerry. Do you mind kicking it off for us? Please? If you just give us a little intro and why you would like to continue since you've been on the board forever.
You know, I.
And then we'll see if the council has any questions.
I'm a 30-year Woodland Park resident, born and raised in Colorado Springs and lived around here. And I think I just got this propensity for punishment. That's probably why I'm here.
Thank you. Counsel, do you, any of you have any questions for Jerry?
Yeah, is it okay though? Thank you. Jerry, I'll just, wait a minute, hold on there. So how long have you been on the DDA?
Quite a few years. I, I was thinking about it earlier and it's probably been at least seven.
Seven years, okay. Thank you.
So I just had a quick question. What would you like to see occur in the next three years while you're on the board?
Well, my goal is to, believe it or not, not represent you, but to represent the public's welfare. And whatever comes up that I feel that I have the input in, I would express it. But I'm just here to be part of the team, figure it out, and make it work.
Thanks. Jerry.
Hi, Mr. Good. It's finally, it's nice to finally know the face with a name.
Yeah.
My question to you is, what do you think's going well with DDA?
You asked me what's going wrong. I probably could. There, it's pretty cohesive now. They've undergone transfer of ownership of Woodland Station, which is a big hurdle. There's just, yeah, it's going well.
Counsel, anything else for Jerry? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I do.
Oh, sorry, Steve. I forgot you were there.
My question, Jerry, are you still enjoying what you're doing?
Yes, yes. I, I like the challenges, the, you know, I started out to do a job. I was kind of wrangled into it, but I like to finish what I started and I want to see it come to fruition.
Well, the reason why I ask this question is because once you do not enjoy what you're doing, then it really doesn't matter anymore. But knowing that you still enjoy what you do makes a big difference.
Yeah, I have a tendency to get under a couple of people's skin, so I kind of enjoy that.
Well, we all do. And that's what I enjoy. Thank you. Yep, that's it.
All right. That all counsel? Thank you, Jerry. Let's, do you mind if we listen, get input from all of them and then take them individually for appointment? Is that okay, counsel? Okay. John, would you like to join us?
Sure.
State my name, John Gamilke. We own, let me see, we own two buildings in downtown. We own 116, which is the Java House, and we own 118, which is the Miss Press Clothing Store.
Counsel questions for John? So I'll go with, what have you been proud to have accomplished so far?
Well, we got, we got that property sold and getting it developed. And that was a big deal. That's been something that's needed to happen for a lot of years and didn't happen. We're able to finally be a part of making that happen. That's probably the biggest one. The Woodland Station, when I say that property, I think everybody knows.
Anyone else, counsel, question? Steve?
I think I'm okay because it looks like he enjoys what he does.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
He's a man of few words. Is Eric with us? There he is. Please.
Good evening.
I looked right over you.
It's okay. It happens.
Just tell us who you are a little bit, why you want to stay with the board.
Sure. I'm Eric Cabrera. I own the Donut Mill. I'm a resident now of Woodland Park. We moved here in 2017. Grew up in New York, lived in Orlando, moved here. And honestly, this is the first place that has provided a sense of home for me and my family. We're just a comfort when we, when we come home through our door, rest our head. It's a great community to raise kids and operate a business in as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Catherine? So what have you enjoyed so far about being on board?
It's the relationships that are built. It's the cohesiveness of the board itself. I was invited to step into a vacancy by Mr. Perry. And it, it has taught me a lot about the community that I live in, the operations of it. And I think that's very important. When you want to be a part of a community, you have to understand how it works. And I got to step in as they were going through the property transfer with the Cog Railroad, all that stuff. And I wasn't personally heavily involved, but I got to watch and learn how the operations take place. And I was very impressed by, you know, like the gentleman stated, he likes to get under people's skin and, you know, it, it's, that is needed. There's a huge diversity that sits on that small board. And I think that's extremely important. And they're all open to having mature conversations. Whether you agree with each other or not, you could leave, shake hands and, you know, greet each other next time you see each other.
Thank you.
Eric?
Yes.
How long have you been in Woodland Park?
2017.
Seventeen. And what brought you here?
My wife wanted to go to Bible college.
Okay.
So we moved here and we decided to stay because we fell in love.
You say Donut Mill, the Donut Mill?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Smitty, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. With the, the thing that I like about the Donut Mills, I knew the Kinners, you know, personally. Yes, you know, Terry, yes, I did. I coached Mike Kinner when he was in football. And the thing that I like about it is that the consistency that you have maintained that our community expects.
Thank you.
And, you know, I'm a man of, that likes that, you know, ongoing consistency.
Sure.
And with you being on the, you know, on the board there, insist, consistency matters. And I, I like that.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate your recognizing that because I took about a year working 365 days straight to bring it back to its original state. Not that it, it was falling off before from the previous owner at all. Was able to connect with the original owners and had them come up and sat with them for hours going through photo albums, recipes, processes to bring it back to exactly what it was. So thank you for recognizing that.
Yes.
Terry, go ahead.
Does that mean you found the original recipe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Nice. Anything else, Carol?
Eric, we're all pleased that Tava Project's finally up and running. What do, what do you think some of the next projects coming down the road will be for the DDA to all look forward to?
Sure. I think the old tiki hut is probably something that needs to be taken care of, you know, first, because that's as soon as you enter our city. I mean, we have a beautiful city and then we have a blighted area right there. I think that property could be utilized in a number of ways, such as maybe having a tourism office there, right when people walk in. I think we, as a community, need to do a better job inviting people to see what we do offer and what we have. So that would be one of my first objectives. And then, of course, with the growing, you know, population, safety is always a concern for, you know, what people walking the streets, crosswalks, stuff like that. As we have controlled, sustainable growth, we need to provide those safety measures as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Suzanne, are we just going to do a motion and a vote for these?
If we could do individual ones, that'd be great. All right. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion. We'll start with Mr. Good.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jerry Good to the DDA for the next three years.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Go ahead. Case? Yes. Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Gamilke, please.
I would like to make a motion to appoint, reappoint John Gamilke to the DDA.
Thank you. Second? I'll second. Sorry. Thank you. Suzanne? Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, for, last but not least, Mr. Cabrera.
Motion to, I'll make a motion to appoint Eric Cabrera to the DDA. And I don't know how long, how long is this term?
It's the typical three.
Three. They're all three, okay. For three years.
I second.
Thank you. Suzanne? Baldwin?
Yes.
Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, and congratulations. And Suzanne, would you like to administer the oath of office?
Honored to. Thank you.
The three gentlemen, join me up here, please.
We'll come, we'll come up here. You could stand. I'll wait for Jerry. Okay, if you can stand, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Thank you. Do solemnly swear that it will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Colorado, the charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of member of the Downtown Development Authority upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations, Jerry, Eric, John. Thank you. I'm going to have you all sign this so it's official. Sign them right here. I'm going to go get, let me grab you a pen. I do. Some signature you got there. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Congratulations again. All right, that takes us to 3C, appointment to keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. And again, we'll look to Suzanne when she gets back to her seat.
Thank you, mayor. This is exciting. This is a committee that we need volunteers. We never stop advertising for this committee. It's never full. So we get really excited when we have someone that applies and that's interested. And we have Leah Waters, who applied to be on this committee. And the really neat thing, Kristen is our staff liaison to keep Woodland Park beautiful. She tells me that Leah, even though she hasn't been appointed yet, is still out there doing things, working already, behind the scenes. So I'd like to welcome Leah to the podium so counsel can meet her.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, counsel, Mayor Case. Um, so a little bit about myself?
Yeah.
So I'm a Colorado native. I grew up in Pueblo. My husband grew up here. We just moved back up here a couple of years ago. I'm really looking to, I'm passionate about making a difference wherever I live. So looking to make a positive difference in Woodland Park, especially as we're looking to raise a family here. We moved back up here to be closer to his family. We have a business, Watts Media Marketing Business, and just looking to be more involved and make a positive difference in the community.
Great. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No questions. But I do want to comment on the fact that Leah has already attended one of our meetings, my first meeting and her first meeting. And I thought she'd been there forever because she asked the right questions. And we'll talk about it later, but she's already to jump into our citywide cleanup on Saturday. So Leah, welcome and, and welcome to Woodland Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else? All right.
Yeah, I do. All right. I know, I'm, I'm the ghost. Yeah, Leah, if I'm not mistaken, I've already seen you out there to bow. And that really pleases me for somebody that's already doing something before they're even thought about. Which, you know, it's high praise for me.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Nothing else, counsel? I look for a motion to approve.
Yes, I'll make the motion to appoint Leah Waters to fill the vacancy on the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee.
I second.
Thank you, counsel. Suzanne? Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith? Smith? Steve?
Muted.
He's muted.
Muted.
Yeah, I'm here. Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Leah. Would you like to administer her oath?
Absolutely. Okay, Leah, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm Leah Waters.
I'm Leah Waters.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and of the state of Colorado, the charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully perform the duties
and I will faithfully perform the duties
of member of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee
as a member of the Woodland Park Beautiful Committee
upon which I'm about to enter.
On which I'm about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have you sign this right here. Right here. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you, Leah. All right. That takes us to item D, which is an appointment to, to an alternate position for the Pike's Peak Area Council of Government's Board of Directors. When we appointed the representative, which is me, to PPACG, we did not appoint an alternate. And most of the member agencies have an alternate in case the primary can't serve or can't attend. So typically, that is the role of the mayor pro tem. I'm not sure if she's interested in that or if the council agrees with that, but that would be my suggestion.
Well, I do not have a problem being the alternate. Well, I do not have a problem being the alternate. If you so choose.
All right. Cease, would you like us to vote for Cease?
Okay.
Can I ask?
Ask a question before we go to the vote. Um, what, what are the, the highlights or the issues right now for PPACG?
Oh, gosh. Well, we're having to find alternate meeting space because they are redoing the entire HVAC and AC system because it is, it is not functioning and it doesn't turn off, and so it's still heating the building. And we are working through, I have for my update, um, the update from C dot. I just happen to have the agenda here. We just had the fiscal audit presented to us, and there were no findings. It was a clean audit report for PPACG. They, they land at a little over a $2 million fund balance. You know, it's pretty uneventful right now, other than just our regular updates from the military service areas, and then C dot keeping them posted on, on their projects that they're doing in the region. One of them being what we see on 67, uh, with those turn lanes and the suicide lane that they're putting down the middle and widening. So it's really kind of just status quo right now. We have, there's, I'm also going to bring up to you all, uh, during our, our, uh, reports, we still have some committees that we don't have representation on that I'd like to just remind everyone that we need someone to serve there. But it's just really light business right now, and, um,
Well, during reports, I do want to ask you about any, any update, if any, on, uh, way ahead for reliever route.
Yeah.
We'll go there. We'll wait. Thanks.
You're welcome. Carol, are, are you interested in doing it?
The reliever wa- route?
No, 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 being, being the alternate.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, okay.
No, I wanna go to a building that's not air conditioned.
We're actually meeting at the county commissioners at El Paso County's, uh, meeting place for a while. So, anyway.
Well, I, then I would move to appoint, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Nakai as the alternate to the PPACG.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Smitty. Suzanne? Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Catherine. Um, item E, three E, is discussion in the public meeting of the signature event designation and allocation. At our retreat, counsel, you'll remember, we had a, a short conversation about, uh, looking at signature events again, and what that might look like from both aid and in-kind contribution and a possible cash contribution or awards to signature events. And I know that we could look back when Mayor Carr was serving. He is the one that really kind of started that designation of the larger events that bring lots of, of incoming traffic into our community um, to benefit everyone, businesses and, and the city alike. Um, so I think, just a short discussion, I wanted to see where the council stands and whether we can get consensus on one or both of those items as, as far as in-kind and possible money contributions to signature events, and revisiting that again. Terry?
Uh, I just have a couple of questions. So would the process look, uh, like it did, what was it, last year? An, an application? There would be an application submitted for cash contributions. Do, is there an application required for in-kind services?
We have not done that before.
It was just a conversation.
Yeah, I think that comes to the city in the form of the temporary use permits
Okay.
and the requirements of the city's services from that. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And then, uh, I know that, 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 when I was on Parks and Rec and we were reviewing applications, there was a fa- kind of a follow-up document that was required, um, where they would report back basically about the, the number of people in attendance and, I guess, estimates to how, about how much money they brought into the city. Are we gonna do that again? Is that part of this discussion?
I would hope so, yes.
Okay.
And it really is, I think, what I, what I'm, and staff is looking for is do we have an interest in visiting this and addressing those things and building a program again, or a policy again? The last, the last go-round, I think, I was, I think that that should have come back to the council and that that should have been, been a decision of the council because that's our job as the elected officials. And, um, it got missed and didn't happen for very various and sudden reasons. We don't even know. So, um, if there's interest, and I just would like consensus so that staff has direction. If not, that's fine, too.
Can you give some examples of a signature event? Like, I, I would say the motorcycle rally.
The rally, I think the Symphony Above the Clouds
Yes.
is one. The, um, Cruise Above the Clouds was another we've discussed in the past, the Mountains Arts Festival. And did you say Fourth of July? We didn't say Fourth of July, but that's.
We consider that a city-sponsored, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. I'd like to see, yeah, or it could be that. I'd like to see a definition, a more formal definition on this, because it seems like every year there's like a, uh, you know, it could be this or that. And if we could really, um, put some parameters around what a signature event is, I do, I, I like the idea of the in-kind services being, you know, I guess, communicated, right? You know, to, to the event organizers that, hey, by the way, you know, this isn't, this isn't cheap to do this. And then the, any, I'm not sure about taxpayer dollars going back yet. Um, I think we have to talk about that some more.
Yeah, from my perspective, I, I think it's either or, um, we, or we, we either provide in-kind services, which is what we have been doing, or we compensate with taxpayer dollars. But I don't think we should be doing both. And quite honestly, I like the way we're doing it right now. We provide the in-kind services. It provides a bit of consistency across the different events. Um, so from my perspective, I, I'm all for kind of how we're doing it right now.
I, I, I almost wanted to kind of push on that a little bit.
Sure.
Councilman Garrett, um, the, I don't think we can relinquish the in-kind services, because who would you, right? We would want to control that.
Sure, but I also don't want to be giving taxpayer money on top of those services that we provide.
Sure, I mean, I think that's.
Yeah. So I, 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 that's why I feel like, you know, kind of what we're doing today is working, so.
If I may, um, I think we have to really start with a definition. Um, you know, you, you guys brought me back on council because I'm old and remember some of the things we did in the past that didn't work and did work. And at one time, we had a community investment fund. It was based on a percentage of our general, uh, fund reserve. So it, it fluctuated every year. Uh, and there was a committee that took applications for those funds and then made the rec- recommendation back to the council and, and, and kind of rank ordered, uh, the, the applications. But it had a caveat that the applicants be nonprofit and that they be from the local area. It eventually became a problem of trying to pick winners and losers. And the, and the program died after a, a very lengthy period where it was successful to, but it, it came to a point where, um, winners were picked and losers were very unhappy. So it went away. Um, then under Mayor Carr, we, uh, brought back this signature event cash award again with applicants. I don't know what the criteria was for that because I wasn't on the council at that particular time, but when I came back last year, I know that Parks and Recreation selected uh, several, uh, worthy organizations, uh, for cash awards. But in that case, there was no distinction of were they profit or for-profit or nonprofit, were they local or not local? I'd like us, and this would be my charge to the staff, to come up with a definition of what, of who would be, um, eligible for whatever we decide to award, whether it's the in-kind services or cash or both. Um, I'm not gonna discount any of those options. My, my personal preference is in-kind services. And I know that Erin has already kind of put together some numbers about what, what does it cost if we decide to sponsor? Oh, and the other, other, um, caveat was, do they charge admission for the event? I don't think that really matters, but it could in our definition. So Erin, are you prepared to tell us how much a a, a signature event package of in-kind services costs?
It does vary based on how much security is needed, traffic control, et cetera. So the most expensive event we had last year was 14,000. Uh, many of our other events are somewhere about 4,000, depending on what, what is needed. And we have explored as a staff, looking at larger scale events, you know, what would private security look like? What would um, additional traffic control look like that we would outsource as opposed to doing it at the staff level and then charge that to the events? So there, there's a few different considerations.
Even if you outsourced it, you're still controlling. You, you're not giving it up to.
That has been the discussion among staff, is that we would ultimately control what's going to be approved.
And, and Councilman Garrett talked about, he was, he was pretty happy with status quo. But it's, it is by its nature very inconsistent now. The, the, the staff has approved or, uh, will ha- has approved the TUP for, uh, the Veterans Rally, and the staff has made the decision that we will provide a very healthy in-kind service package, I think, at this point.
I don't believe it's been approved yet, but yes, that, that has been.
And we, we've given them, we've given them that, well, it, it's almost by default, but I don't th- think we want to do that going forward. I think we need to formalize it in order to make it equitable for any, any group that may apply for the s- signature event status. They would still have to, you know, if you look up, look at our, our temporary use permit, right now, a special event TUP fee is $110. That's not too onerous. Uh, the vendors that serve the, the event are charged $40 each, plus they have to, um, obtain a license to sell, and they have to remit, uh, sales tax at the end of the event. Uh, I think we need to capture that, codify that, define what a signature event is. Is it, you know, how many days, how many can we afford to do? Not in terms of dollars per se, but, you know, we are literally loving our, loving our park to death. And, you know, how many signature events can we sponsor in a year without having to, you know, level it and start over again every year? But I, I, I want to, to give that task to the staff. I'm sure they're up to it. But I think signature events are, are so important to the community, and it, it, it's everything from the farmer's market to the Veterans Rally to the, the Mountain Arts Festival. But I know there's an, another, um, uh, I think it's Derek Wagner actually was talking about Westfest, which I think would just be terrific for this community. But is it one day, two days, four days? Can we, can we, uh, stretch our police department four days on, on overtime? I, I don't know. I, I would like that to come back to the council so we can make a more cogent decision.
Absolutely. And we, as a staff, because of Westfest, did take a very hard look at what we are capable of and what we would need to outsource and charge to these oth- these other events. So we would be prepared to talk about that. Ben actually has done a tremendous amount of work on that front. So we, we would be prepared for that conversation.
And getting the consistency and, and being, you know, clear with what we are and are not offering, I have absolutely no issues with whatsoever. So from that perspective, um, building the box is where we need to go.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sure event organizers would appreciate that as well, right? It gets very frustrating, I'm sure, trying to figure out, you know, where the council stands on these things.
Yeah, and, and what if we do have competing, uh, events? And that has happened, and it, it's not, it's not pretty. When you have to say, okay, I know you had a TUP, but, you know, we've got another event that's possibly gonna bring in more money, and sorry, you're, you're bounced. I don't want to have to do that every year. I'd, I'd like us to have maybe even windows of application for these signature events, so everyone knows what's coming. There's no surprises.
I guess there's, you kind of brought up a question in my mind. So there's, is there city tax generated? I mean, is there taxes that will go to the city from these, from the event organizers themselves? Not, not from the retail or the vendors and things like that?
Well, no, a special event TUP is $110. And I don't know, does that apply to nonprofits as well?
I believe that it does.
So, and then there's the sales tax.
What does that mean? Sales tax from?
When the vendor sells at one of these events, like the farmer's market, they must remit sales tax.
Individual vendors?
Correct.
Okay.
Not the event itself?
No, not the event.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Have anything they want to add to the, the guidance that we're gonna give staff? So that we can.
No, I, I guess I pretty much agree with George and Carol and everybody. What I, what's bothered me the last few years is the inconsistency. I mean, one year we do it, one year we don't do it. We pick, we pick, like Carol said, winners and losers, and, and I just don't. I don't think it's, it's equitable, and we need to set ground rules and, and follow them consistently.
And therein lies the key.
Correct.
Whatever box we build, uh, we've got to adhere to consistently. And I think some effort needs to be put into constructing this box in a way that is built for the long term. Uh, because we tend to go back and forth on this as counsel, depending on who's sitting up here, so.
Well, and, and, I mean, from that perspective, I'm, I'm pretty much to that. I just want the in-kind. But, you know, I'll certainly listen, and we can all come up with a new plan and go from there.
Is that okay with you, Terry?
Yes, I think the main problem that we ran into, um, when I was on Parks and Rec, is that we didn't have a clear box. We didn't really know, we didn't really understand that what the signature event was. So that, I think that's the most important thing, to get the consistency.
Smitty?
Yeah, um, my thing is, uh, now I've thought long and hard about, you know, situations like this. I'm really for the nonprofit organizations, especially when it comes back into our communities and such like that. A lot of nonprofits don't have a lot of funding, but they need help with funding. They can actually generate a lot of funding. They can go back into our community. Now, me myself, I belong to one of the largest and oldest nonprofit, you know, organizations in the world. And we generate millions, but in order to generate millions for our community and others, is you need a starting point. And that's my whole concern, regardless how small they are or how big they are. I really think we need to look at, you know, the possibilities of those smaller ones that have been passed over. They can actually wind up being, you know, pretty beneficial to our community. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
And that was a lot of discussion in Parks and Rec, was bringing events that would grow but that, that weren't currently signature events, so.
Thank you.
Just for the record, we never did get any information from any of the signature events from a year ago, as far as what they provided for ROI.
Correct.
I would put some of that back on the staff that we didn't follow up on, and it was not.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay, so I think, if you, if I may, I think that we want staff to, to work on building that box, definition, um, some criteria, and what that might look like, um, for the council to take into consideration for further discussion. Is that good?
Great. Got it.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate that. All right, takes us to three F, a presentation and update on the upcoming Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Cleanup. Next week, this coming weekend, correct? And that's, uh, Kristen Higginbotham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am here tonight as your city staff liaison for the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. The 22nd Annual Citywide Cleanup Event is this Saturday at Memorial Park. Community, we have, community members of all ages are encouraged to participate and help with beautification efforts. The event opens at 8:30 a.m. for registration and officially kicks off at 9 a.m. Folks can also complete the registration ahead of time by visiting the city's website. Um, you'll find it under the latest news. It's a very quick process. After registration, volunteers will be sent off to their designated areas with trash and safety supplies. We then reconvene at Memorial Park close to noon, um, when we will, we will enjoy refreshments, music, um, and time with friends and neighbors. I would like to highlight a few incredible sponsors that we have for this year's cleanup. First is AJ's Pizza, which is donating pizza for all the volunteers for a little lunch. Natural, uh, Natural Grocers is donating uh, produce like apples and bananas as well as reusable bags. Cafe Leo is donating coffee for the morning. And Walmart stepped in to help us with a few essential supplies like water coolers, gloves, um, and paper plates. This year's biggest supporter though is waste management. Um, they are donating, donating two twenty-yard dumpsters for the cleanup waste. Um, their organization is also providing an incredible opportunity for local residents. During the hours of ten thirty A M. to noon, Teller County residents can bring trash and recyclables to the Divide Transfer Station for no charge. Proof of residency, like a driver's license, is all that's required. You do not need to make an appointment. Um, we are really hopeful that the community will rally together and lend their hands to help keep Woodland Park beautiful. And I also have to let you know, as Suzanne mentioned, the community is accepting members, app, app, membership applications uh, for new members. So if you are passionate about volunteering close to home, we really encourage you to give us a chance and apply. Is there any questions I can answer for you? Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few on the actual, um, waste management trip or the dump. Um, what are they allowing you to bring?
So it is regular household trash items, so nothing exceptionally large or difficult. So items such as mattresses, paints, things like that will not be accepted. So common house, household trash and recyclables.
Right, so cardboard?
Yes.
I'm assuming they're not doing monitors and TVs and that such, okay.
Um, however, I will also let you know that there is another clean sweep event coming up through the El Paso County, um, which is open to Teller County residents. That'll be coming out in August. Um, that will be launched on the city's website and social media pretty soon here. But that will include those hard to recycle items. So between the two events over the next couple of weeks, you should be able to clean out your house and garage.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Kelly, I had a question for Suzanne. Uh, qualifications to uh, be appointed to this committee. Is cit- uh, is city residency a requirement?
It is not.
Yes. And how many positions do we have left?
We, there's a total of nine.
Correct.
And I think we have four now.
Correct.
So we have five.
All right, so. Out there, apply. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin. All right, item four, Suzanne, do we have any additions, dilutions, or corrections to the agenda?
We do not.
Item five, consent calendar. Item A is approval of the regularly scheduled city council meeting minutes for June sixth of twenty twenty-four. Counsel? This is a consent item. Any, any questions or corrections that you'd like to give the clerk? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from June sixth.
I second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you, Jones.
Uh, yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Suzanne?
Yes, ma'am. This evening, our first speaker is Jamison Dionne. And I have a handout that you'd like me to hand out. So don't start the clock yet, Erica.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
All right, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, first off, I'd like to extend my sincere appreciation to two members of city council. Uh, council member Nakai and council member Harvey for pushing to have the emergency resolution read tonight to ensure that our second amendment rights are still protected here in Woodland Park. Despite the unconstitutional legislation passed this year in the state house. I also want to thank the attorneys and anyone else on council that was part of making this happen. I certainly hope each of you will demonstrate that you will indeed uphold the constitution of the United States of America and oath that each of you swore when taking this office by voting affirmative for that agenda item. A lot has been made in these meetings in regard to violations of the intergovernmental agreement between Woodland Park School District and the city concerning the sales tax. The past Woodland Park mayor chastised the school district for failing to schedule the meetings in which they communicate how the sales tax is being utilized. I'd like to commend current mayor Kelly Case for setting the record straight in a past meeting. The both city and W P S D failed to meet the terms of the I G A by continuing these meetings through and after COVID. It was a shared failure and I'm happy it's been corrected. There have been other violations of the terms of the original I G A though, that have not been discussed. Terms of the original I G A stipulated that such proceeds of the sales tax shall be transferred to the district on a monthly basis on or before the last working day of the following month. Review of the sales tax distributions in twenty twenty-three to the school district show that none of the payments made from the city to the school district were compliant with the twenty sixteen I G A. Payments were made every other month with batch payments, payments with, for two months worth of sales tax revenue at a time. In addition, the payments that were made mostly and most timely were two months out from the original collection. The I G A stipulates the following month. In addition, there's one more minor point. The I G A stipulated the payments be transferred before the last working day of the month. And often the payments were received on or after the last working day of the month. Following the same logic that the critics of W P S D have held, where is the accountability for city council? Clearly, the I G, I G A has been violated by the city of Woodland Park. Should we set up a nonprofit to hold the city accountable? Should we establish a new group of bureaucrats at the taxpayer's expense to oversee the city's payments to W P S D? And of course, these ideas are ludicrous. We don't need to increase the size of bureaucracy to ensure that responsible adults do their job. To that point, I received communication between W P S D and city employees that showed that the problem was identified and corrected earlier this year. It turns out that responsible adults can work together without adding uh, more bureaucracy at taxpayer expense. That said, we also don't want a dual standard. Why is the school district being held to the highest of standards? Even being asked to go above and beyond the terms of the intergovernmental agreement in an effort to placate conspiracy theorists and activists? When the city of Woodland Park has clearly failed to maintain their side of the agreement consistently. There have also been accusations of financial fraud on the part of the Woodland Park School District. A local conspiracy website posted a blog entry entitled Financial Fraud at W P S D. In it, this individual called out a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar S R transfer from W P S D to Merritt Academy. It turns out, after I obtained information through Cora, that the prior administration in W P S D failed to properly allocate S R funds from the state charter school. Despite there being a very specific language from the state that says the clear legislative intent is to benefit all public schools and students regardless of school type. This website is flush with articles seeking to demonize charter schools. Voters beware, charters are trying to buy the Colorado Board of Education. We get it, you don't like charter schools. But this isn't a valid reason to try and diet funding earmarked by legislature for all students, including charter schools. The unfortunate thing is that some members of city council appear to have read into that apparent agenda. Rather than seeking the truth. I corred the information, so can you, and I'm happy to provide the extra facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne? Do you have more?
We do. Mike Demuth?
Good evening, Mike.
Hey guys, uh, Mike Demuth, Florissant.
Thank you.
As you know, I'm the uh, chair of the district accountability committee, but since I'm not here, um, I did not meet with the DAC to prepare this speech. I'm speaking on my own accord and not on behalf of the other members of the district accountability committee. So first, I want to thank Mr. George Jones and Terry Baldwin for doing our dunk tank at the upcoming, um, Fourth of July celebration. It's going to be a blast. The Divide Mountain Explorers are raising money to build little libraries. Um, one of them's going to go right here in Woodland Park. So you guys are awesome. We appreciate it. Miss Case? We're going to get you to do it too, you know that. So, um, anyway, uh, so regarding the one point oh nine percent tax and I G A. I'm in full support of the school district on this one. That's no surprise to you folks up there. Um, the citizens you, you represent voted for this tax. The city council signed a legal binding contract and the schools just need the money. Uh, the district is somewhere in the range of over thirty million dollars in debt and have a mortgage at Summit Elementary in Divide. Um, I've gotten emails from almost all of you and I appreciate it, uh, even if we don't agree. Um, I see those of you who make eye contact and listen to, to speakers. Um, and that kind of thought shows a lot. I urge you to make decisions based off of facts as opposed to the preconceived perceptions and keyboard warrior Facebook opinions. Um, there is no room for hatred or political party or, um, um, or hatred of an elected board in this decision. Uh, the facts are this. The citizens voted on this tax. Annual state audits are performed and no wrongdoing has been found despite what they say on Facebook. Uh, the city council signed a legal binding, um, document in perpetuity. And failure to pay these funds to the district is a breach of that contract. Uh, there is no reason for having, um, the district pay for further audits. Use what they have from the state. They have given you their budget and you don't like the format. The I G, the I G A says nothing about what the, what format they have to present their budget to you in. Again, I challenge you guys to do the right thing with the district, do the right thing for the schools and do the right thing for the children. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Lance McMahon, Mahan?
Been sitting down too long. It's past my bedtime, but I'm awake now. Um, good evening, members of the Woodland Park City Council. My name is Lance McMahon and I'm a certified public accountant licensed in Colorado. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. Uh, we live in Divide, I suppose, really a little bit south of Midland, up in the mountains. Uh, moved here. My wife and I could have picked any place in the United States to come. We came here because of our love of the mountains. We've been coming here for years. August, we will have been here for eight years. And now the COVID's over and my wife's through some health issues. We're getting into Woodland Park and getting out more and we just absolutely love the community. I'm going to begin with some excerpts directly from the Woodland Park School District June board meeting related to the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, it's in the YouTube video, you'll see it, one hour and two minutes. A board member asked for an explanation as to how the state equalization revenues work and how the amounts paid to the charter school are calculated. Considering that the charter school students represent twenty-four percent of the student population. The budget document indicates that total state equalization in the district budget is around eight million, four hundred thousand dollars. Um, these are all public documents you can, can find. The charter school per the budget is being allocated five million, three hundred thousand dollars or sixty-four percent. And not twenty-four percent as for the charter school student population. This is a serious defect and unexplained variance in the budget document. The superintendent's response to the board member was, um, quote, "I have no comment." Quote, "But all of the funds are allocated by headcount." A crucial question arises. If all state equalization funds are allocated based on pupil count, why is this not explicitly clarified in the budget document? They don't match. Despite the significant unexplained variance, the board proceeds to approve the budget document. There has long been a concern within the community regarding the lack of transparency. The recent revelis- revelation that the district's handling of transportation costs disproportionately benefits the charter school has only heightened these concerns. And there's a really good cost management study that verifies that. During the budget presentation, a board member's unanswered question about the state equalization allocations to the charter school further underscore these issues. Also during recent board meetings, the issues discussed like the example above create an impression of an apparent role reversal between the board and the superintendent. Traditionally, the board serves as the governing body, responsible for hiring, evaluating, and directing the superintendent. However, it appears that the superintendent now wields significant control and influence over the board. And makes unilateral decisions without consulting or informing the board. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Matt Galowski?
Hello, Matt Galowski, resident of Woodland Park. And like everyone else, I want to talk about these sales tax sharing issue with our school district. Um, I think it comes down to a question of trust. Can we trust the school district to, uh, be honest and transparent with that money? I believe we cannot. Wit, uh, Ken Wit stood up here not too long ago, showed a pie chart of how that sales tax money was going to be spent. The, the pie chart was a lie. Um, even if he wanted to, he could not give you an honest answer. The sales tax money goes into the general fund, gets mixed in with all the, you know, federal and state money there. Nobody, nobody can honestly say right now how that money is being spent. Except for one thing, he, he signaled out the Captured Kids Heart Program as a use of the sales tax money and the innovation category, I think. But go and look at the actual charges and you'll see it's being paid for by grant money and by the reserves, the, the reserve balance from the previous year, not from sales tax money for this year, as he said. Transport, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing about capturing kids' heart. Um, there, there's an invoice for about seventy-five thousand bucks. Uh, the itemization on that invoice adds up to about twenty-three thousand. It makes no mention of what the other fifty-two thousand dollars is for. The, the district paid it. I, I've asked for the documents, you know, to, to, uh, you know, that, that it references to like maybe dig in into that and figure it out, but th- they're overdue on the core request. They have not provided it yet. So I don't know. Probably just a, an honest bookkeeping mistake. Uh, the transportation fund you've heard about, uh, in the last, uh, school board meeting, Wit, uh, talked about, what he claimed was that the cost of busing the kids to and from schools is entirely reimbursed by the state. That is false. It, the, the state doesn't even cover a third of it. The rest of it comes from our general fund. I traded emails with him afterwards. He admitted his mistake and he apologized, but the public remains misled. So the bottom line is that the people in charge of the finances of our school district don't appear to understand how school finances actually work. Then there's a matter of the missing two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of grant money that you heard about earlier. We were told it was going to be spent in Columbine, Summit, Gateway, the middle school and the high school. It was in the budget for those schools. That's not what happened. Over summer break, Ken Wit took that money. He gave it to Merritt Academy. He never informed the public. There was no vote by the board on this matter. But here's the thing, that was grant money and grants are incredibly traceable. And you can see exactly where that money went. I know that, uh, Ken Wit and Mick Bates are pushing for you to keep things the way they've always been, saying, why change it? Well, the past city councils made a mistake. They should never have put this framework into place. And I'm asking you guys to fix that and ask the district to treat the sales tax money like they would any grant. We deserve that accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Kitten Walker? And Nicole? I don't want to even butcher your name again.
Thank you so much. Um, I signed up for a public comment on item eight B. Um, happy to make that comment right now. Um, I tried to read through this ordinance and even as a lawyer, I have to admit, it took me a long time to figure out what this was actually about.
I'll call you when we get to E P.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment this evening.
Thank you. Nicole, I just would like to clarify. Um, item eight B will take public comment at the June eighteenth meeting. I mean, July eighteenth meeting, forgive me. Um, this is initial posting to introduce the ordinance. So if you would like to return and, and see us on June, July eighteenth, then we will be holding the public hearing then and we will be welcoming public comment. Okay? Thank you.
All right, on to item seven, unfinished business. We have none.
All right, on to item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item 8A is, these are ordinances on initial posting council. Item 8A is consider ordinance 1476, series 2024 on initial posting and ordinance of the city council of Woodland Park, Colorado, adopting by reference the 2024 edition of the model traffic code. And it goes on to describe it further. Um, and our city attorney Nina Williams is here to do a very brief introduction of this ordinance for the council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Erica Romberg for our office is a, um, deputy prosecutor. She worked on this with um, our city prosecutor and judge and also Suzanne McLaren, I believe the municipal court clerk. Um, so our, our municipality, most municipalities follow the model traffic code with certain amendments. So what this ordinance does is simply updates the Woodland Park specific amendments from 2020 to 2024. And it also, um, streamlines, makes it more clear, um, how it's, how it's all laid out. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay. Also, I, council, I'd just like you to know that at the public hearing on July 18th, the judge will be present in case there's any questions of the judge, uh, with regards to the traffic code. All right, it's initial posting, so we would need a motion to, uh, pass the ordinance on first reading and set the public hearing for July 18th. So moved. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Any, any discussion council before we vote?
I will say I tried to read our current code versus the new one and this one's way better.
Good job.
It was a nightmare to try to figure out the old one. Definitely streamlines it.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Smith? Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 8B is consider ordinance number 1477, series 2024 on initial posting and ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, amending Title V of the Woodland Park Municipal Code Regarding Wireless Communication Facility Regulations to establish and to establish regulations for wireless communication facilities and set the public hearing for June 18th, 2024. July, I'm, we're still in June. I'm working on it. I even wrote it down.
So I had a number of comments which, and I know Jeff has comments. So one of the things is I think this is really wordy. Um, for one, and the other is there's not a really good definition of what a wireless communication facility is versus a small cell facility. So I'd like to get that clarified because you go back and forth and the ordinance talking about the two. And Jeff actually explained to me the difference, but it'd be nice if we could have a definition in the ordinance of what the differences are.
Um, can I just, um,
If it's in there, then it's, it's really wordy and I missed it. I'm sorry.
Yes, there's a reason why this is, is wordy. It's, I could just, if I could introduce it, that would be good. And then we'll see if any questions, I'll, I'll answer that. Um, so in the last, about two years ago, city council passed a small cell ordinance. Um, and that's all that was passed. Um, so rather than completely start over, we took these codes and we updated and expanded them to include all wireless communication facilities. Because that was unfortunately missing, um, from Woodland Park Municipal Code since 1997, um, when, when the, you know, certain, certain federal regulations came out. Um, so this was with the goal of expanding the city's ability to regulate not just small cell facilities, but tow, all towers. So in order to get these more comprehensive regulations, we looked at several other communities that regulate not only small cell facilities, but all towers, including Lyons, Orvato, Longmont, Loveland and Colorado Springs. We modeled these regulations, uh, most specifically on the Lyons code. It's our hope that these updated regulations will address most of council's concerns that have come the past year or so. These draft regulations have been vetted, um, by Ken Feldman of our firm, um, who has over 40 years of telecommunications experience on the local government side. So they, they represent the most restrictive we could be as a municipality, given federal and state, um, restrictions. It, you know, as you might see by paging the ordinance, there's specific definitions, um, also size, spacing, location, siding, lighting, landscaping, fencing, design, camouflage, concealment restrictions, and then specific application review procedures. It also includes clear requirements that the wireless communication facilities must comply with. Um, again, these type of regulations have been missing from the Woodland Park Municipal Code. So right now, without this ordinance, we can enforce such restrictions upon telecommunication providers. Um, and then I'll answer all, any additional questions, but there is, um, the small cell facility was already defined. Um, it's an alphabetical order in the definition, so this is on page four of the ordinance. And then, um, generally there's, I mean, there's, there's a lot of definitions, alternative tower structure and there's, um, wireless. There's the over the air receiving device. There's, again, the small cell is not in bold because it already existed. And then wireless communication facility already existed. So that's the last or definition on page six.
Thank you, Nina.
Thanks, Nina. Sorry, I just, I missed it.
Suzanne, did we have a second on that motion? We didn't have a motion yet.
We haven't gotten that. Nina, um, on page 18, so under section 5.24.070, um, clause or section B, um, uh, I'd like to see that entire section removed from the ordinance. So what that section is taught, yeah, it'll be page 18.
Yes.
Yeah, clause B or whatever the, the legal terminology is.
Can we do that on first reading? I don't.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, can we? That's, that's a good.
Yeah, I mean, you can make a motion, um, if everyone agrees. This was, seemed to be an important part that people had wanted, but it's a policy decision. Um, like I said, I know a lot of people were interested in that and a lot of your, your community members have spoken about that. Um, so I would say.
Yeah, so specifically so the public knows what I'm talking about, um, section B of that calls out, um, uh, concerns around radio frequency emission standards. Um, that's what the FCC is for, not us. So that's why I would like to see that, that section removed from the ordinance.
All it's saying though is that, that they must comply with federal standards.
Well, it also says if concerns regarding compliance with radio frequency emission standards for a WCF have been made to the city, the city may request that the owner operator of the WCF provide information demonstrating compliance. Um, goes on to, to explain that, but my perspective is, um, we, that, that's just unnecessary and it puts a burden in there that I don't think needs to be in there.
I would, I would say that we would have that discussion during the public hearing.
Okay.
Because I think parts of it are still applicable and I don't argue with what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, but I don't believe we can do that on first reading. This is very administrative in nature.
So the only other thing I was going to ask was has, has staff looked at this and given us their input?
We, we will at the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and I'd appreciate any input now or in, in before, um, like I said, there's, um, you know, no one who's more of an expert on the municipal side protecting municipalities, um, as much as possible for the, against, you know, not against, but with the telecommunication industry. Um, then Ken Feldman, um, who vetted this ordinance and, um, it's, it's been requested from you all, but, um, if, you know, this is, it is, it is highly technical, so I would appreciate questions, comments either now or before, um, the public hearing by either staff or council.
I would, I would like a little bit more info from staff. I value their opinions and their knowledge. And a little bit more from our legal, our legal team also.
We drafted this ordinance, um, yeah, I guess if there's any technical experts on staff, they could, or any, you know, generally, but like I said, I would appreciate, um, any input or so we could all, you know, come prepared, but, um, yeah, we drafted this ordinance, um, similar to a lot of other ordinances that protects municipalities, that state.
And, and item B, I think, and maybe we should have this conversation at the public hearing, but an item B, it, it's just saying at our reasonable discretion that we can ask for them to provide evidence of compliance. I don't think that we're imposing what that compliance would be. It would just be evidence that they're in compliance with these items.
Yeah, we can't do more than this. This is the most restrictive ones we could do. Um, and it's taking into account um, concerns that we had heard for a couple of years and these issues.
I think we should have that conversation on that at the public hearing because I, I have some positions on it as well.
Me too.
So I'm not smart enough.
I'd say camouflaged.
Yeah. All right, counsel, can I get a motion to pass this on first reading and set the public hearing for July 18th?
I'm moved. Yeah, okay.
Carrie got it.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Suzanne?
Case?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Mayor?
Yes.
I just do need to make one comment I received from Judge McClintock.
Please.
She is on with us this evening. When it comes to the emergency ordinance, she would like to speak. But also she wanted me to remind council that the model traffic code ordinance that you just voted on to move to public hearing is that, um, she wants you to be aware that what is presented is not all of the model traffic code that applies, but just additions that we are adding. So she just wants you to know it's not the whole entire thing. And so I told her I would mention that to you and she's with us for the next item.
Excellent. Thank you, Josh. All right, council 9A, public hearings. Um, I'd like to, uh, approval of emergency ordinance number 1478, series 2024 and ordinance of the city, the city council of the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, pertaining to firearms on city property and determining an emergency with respect thereto. So opening the public hearing for this. Uh, Nina, would you like to present, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So recently, uh, the Colorado Legislature, uh, passed Senate Bill 24-131. It goes into effect on July 1st on Monday. Um, so this had said that there are sensitive spaces um, or carrying of a firearm will be prohibited. Um, and that includes courthouses, properties for court proceedings, schools, colleges, polling places. Um, except the bill does include an opt-out provision authorizing local governments, um, to enact a law that does permit someone to carry a firearm at certain government spaces. So we had received, um, policy direction from a few of you expressing a concern um, about this state, um, legislation that goes into effect by July 1st. Um, so we drafted this ordinance via emergency. Um, first I'll go into the emergency part and then I'll go more into the ordinance. So our, your charter is very restrictive as it relates to emergency ordinances. Um, and it requires a unanimous decision of all present and it only allows emergency ordinances to be in effect for 90 days. Um, so what we are, um, presenting is that this is an emergency ordinance and then you'll have a more permanent, uh, first reading, second reading, the next two council meetings. But, um, because some of you concerned about the July 1st date, we're presenting this as an emergency, as emergency. So if you can see by the ordinance now, pull it up, I have, I had my memo up and now I have my ordinance. Um, so what we did is included city, the city buildings. We include the city buildings. Um, the city hall and the U cultural, um, center, sorry, I'm pulling up the ordinance. Um, so we included thorough analysis, which is, we feel is necessary for the whereas clauses to establish that foundation. And we were saying there's exceptions to your, um, dangerous and deadly weapons section in the code. And so that it is absolutely clear that that code shouldn't be construed to forbid anybody with a valid concealed carry permit on city hall and city hall property as well as on the cultural center. And we talk about municipal court, uh, because right now state statute already had prohibited any firearms when municipal court proceedings are in session. So we included that caveat. Let me know if you have any questions.
So one, one thing that came to my attention from a citizen is the, um, the fact that it's limited to concealed carry. Open carry is also, uh, allowed. Just wondering why we wouldn't include open carry.
We, uh, received the policy direction from a few of you to include concealed carry. So that's how we drafted the ordinance.
Okay.
So it could be, it could, it could include open carry if you all, um, want that to be permitted as well on your city hall property and you pass cultural center, but knowing that, um, yeah, if that's what you, you guys want to as well, um, allow for open carry in these in these, on these properties, that's up to you.
We don't restrict open carry as it is currently, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And the state law covers open and concealed. Is that also correct, Nina?
Yes. So if you wanted to permit both of those, you'd have to, you know, say that expressly, but like I said, we, um, turned this ordinance around in a day and we, you know, thought it was based on the direction, well, it was based on the direction about concealed carry. That doesn't mean you can't, you all can't change it, but that's why we drafted it that way, only because that's the, the direction that we received the day of Soto.
And also, once, once we have the emergency ordinance in place, then they'll bring back a permanent ordinance, which may not maybe more or less and will be more researched and permanent in nature.
Understood.
So, um, and we'll have first and second reading on that as well. This is to address that July 1st.
No, totally understood. I just from a, you know, understanding the ordinance in front of me, um, I think beyond the discussion this evening, it should include both.
I would agree.
I, I would say the same thing. A, a couple of people, uh, that I had reviewed it also mentioned what, what about open carry? And I think we can, um, add that at the 90, prior to or at the 90 day mark when we can actually modify our own ordinance. Um, and I would appreciate then a staff report too, that would include, um, Chief Dicler's opinion, uh, Judge McCormick, um, and, and also get public input, but this, this is really because we're under the gun because, huh, literally. Because of the state's, uh, state's mandate.
And there was another concern expressed to me. I'll share that with the attorney when we, when we were on drafting the permanent ordinance.
Okay.
Right. Thank you. Any further discussion, council? This vote, this does require unanimous vote of the council to pass. Yes, ma'am.
I know, Mayor, uh, Judge McClintock wanted to speak.
Yes. I will open the public hearing. The public comment portion of the public hearing. Anything else before we open that council? Steve?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Well, I will open the public comment on this ordinance and Ms., Ms. Judge McClintock, we'd love to hear from you.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you taking the time. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, there was one point that I was hoping you could add to that. Um, while I appreciate, um, everyone's right to, um, keep and bear arms, um, we do think it's important to, um, keep the safety that we need to have while we have court in session. Um, our court is actually the only court that I know of in the state that does not have a security system in place. And that is something that, um, we might have to address in the future. Um, we've had situations recently where, um, there have been some dangerous, uh, situations that have come up and, um, There have been some dangerous uh, situations that have come up and um. It's just the nature of what happens in court, even though I think we do a very good job of trying to keep people. On a very even keel and uh, make sure that things go as smoothly as possible. It's just the nature of proceedings of what's taking place in court. But um, I would appreciate if maybe if we could put in something so it's very clear that people understand that they cannot bring. And I, and the statutes as they read now are very clear that say you cannot bring uh, concealed carry or open carry weapons. Into court at all. Um, if we could just make sure it says that.
It is that, and so it's actions I can see, yeah, just sorry to be clear, it is, it is already in there about Minnesota.
Yeah, um, I just, I thought it said that um, municipal court and it said. It was only addressing concealed carry weapons. Um, it probably just says you can't carry any weapons into municipal court at all. I just want to make sure because.
The statute prohibits open carry and um, concealed carry, so this ordinance is allowing back in concealed carry. And therefore saying that you can't have those concealed carry um, in the court. If we, if council does eventually amend. Um, the ordinance to expand to the open carry, then of course this would be updated.
Right. And I just want to make sure so someone doesn't. You, you know, the nature of people when they come to court, if they, if there's any legal room that they could argue about something, they would. Right, and so um. We just need to be very clear. If we're going to have an ordinance such as this that gives people an exemption. That I would just ask that we make sure it's crystal clear that what can't be brought into court, so thank you.
I, I just want to tell you that I, I did bring that up with staff. And we did add that language to the ordinance and are very aware. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Judge, before you go, uh, now I understand why you're always so nice in your courtroom.
No, thanks. We try to, we try to make sure it's a, a pleasant experience as much as we can and um. But, you know, it's just the nature of uh, people having to come to court and they're very stressed out and we try to. Calm everybody down as much as we can, but you know, it's just the way it is, so. Anyway, thank you for your time. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Uh, Mr. Joe Fury.
Thank you. Mr. Fury? Is he upgraded, Eric? Oh. Mr. Fury, you need to accept the up, the um. Invitation to upgrade. To a speaker? Is he gone? We're trying again, Mr. Fury. Okay, there you go.
Okay.
There you are. Welcome.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, city council, I just wanted to thank you for bringing up this emergency ordinance. And I strongly urge you all to approve it. Um. Apparently, our state legislature and governor do not understand that criminals do not follow law. So, uh, please, please approve this emergency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online? No, anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing no one? I will close the public hearing portion of this and look to the council for discussion or more or motion.
I only have one question.
Yes, sir.
And what, what uh, was the situation or issue that brought this up?
Aaron, would you like to answer that?
We're referring to this emergency ordinance, correct?
Yes.
That's what you're asking for, Steve?
Do you need the state, do you need the state legislation or the emergency ordinance?
The emergency ordinance.
So make sure we're answering you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. It was desired by several council members to have this ordinance on the agenda before it actually went into effect July first. So that's why we did this process of doing an emergency ordinance rather than bringing it on first reading and then that wouldn't go affect into effect until July eighteenth, so. Does that make sense? Doing it through this process, we actually can have it go into effect tomorrow.
Okay, I'm, I'm game. All right.
Councilman Smith, there is a, a copy of the, the statute that was passed in the state legislature that we're, we're. We have the option to opt out of, but we were only given until one July. Get a chance to open. It, it came in late this afternoon, the copy of that particular statute, so.
Yeah, I, I read it.
Okay. Anything else, counsel? Look for a motion, please.
Uh, move to approve the emergency uh, ordinance as written.
I second. Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? Who took it? Suzanne?
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes, and thank, thank you to all of the staff that, that put this together for us today.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Definitely, yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. We'll look forward to massaging this and putting it in place permanently. All right, item ten A. Uh, new business agreement between Baseline Engineering Corporation and the city of Woodland Park for professional engineering and survey services. For Fairview Street design in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars. Ben Schmitz.
Thank you, counsel. So. In order to get ready for twenty twenty-five, uh, we are looking to do design and have our project shovel ready. Uh, and this Fairview Street from Sheridan up to twenty-four has been selected. As one of the next ones in line as well as Browning for twenty twenty-five. And uh, this is just the request for the uh, engineering and survey services. To get this designed, it will include a traffic study, it'll look at drainage, it'll look at transportation, it'll look at the. Stop signs that I, I know I've heard from a lot of folks about. Uh, making sure we get those right and uh, look at the speed limits as well. So it's basically just a comprehensive look at that street. Um, it's in currently a failing condition according to our pavement. Uh, condition index, and so it's the, the next one in line to have ready if, if this were to be approved to go out for advertisement in January of twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. And I just want to point out, counsel, this is the first agenda where we have our new business. Nope. This was strictly on the consent calendar. Often had questions, and so we've put it under new business so that we can address them.
Yeah, and I'm happy to put it either place. I just thought you'd like some more discussion.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Staff?
So did you say it was just Fairview or Fairview and Browning?
Uh, sorry, so Browning is already in design for this year, but we have to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with CDOT for the sidewalk portion, so the design's almost done. We just need to finish that CDOT portion for the federal funding component. So Browning and Fairview would be the two big projects in twenty twenty-five for streets as well as the cemetery expansion, which is. Almost complete in design as well. This is just the last of the three.
Yeah, so this is just on top of the others.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else, Steve? Anything for staff? Thunder. Big thunder. All right. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, agreement between Baseline Engineering Corporation and the city of Woodland Park.
I second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? Suzanne?
Baldwin?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Did we lose him?
Smith, he's there.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you, counsel. Item ten B is agreement between RME LT Limited LLL. Doing business as Elite Surface Infrastructure and the city of Woodland Park in the amount of three million five seventy-seven nine fifty-three. For infrastructure improvements on Lake Avenue, Dual Road and Pine Ridge. Ben?
All right, so these are projects that uh, we had started design last year and finished design this year. And went out for competitive bid and we will be completing these projects this year if approved. Um, we're doing something a little bit different with these projects for the communication piece for the public. So uh, here on my screen, you can see the overlay of kind of where these three part projects are. Uh, we have Lake Avenue here. And I'll just uh, kind of highlight a couple of key portions for that. Uh, so there's going to be some additional parking that's going to be. Uh, designated. I know a lot of folks park kind of off on the shoulder on uh, by Memorial Park there. And so we're putting in some additional marked parking, some pedestrian accessibility improvements. Uh, as well as redoing the entire streets and looking at installing uh, fiber infrastructure conduits. Same way we did with Kelly's and Baldwin along these kind of main collector roadways in town. And then if we go back down. Across Highway twenty-four, we're looking at Dual Avenue. And this street, or sorry, Dual Road, so this street, uh, to anybody who lives on it or has driven it is, is very narrow. So in order to meet the, the section requirements for the engineering specs, we're actually going to convert this to a one-way street. And uh, bring it back down through, starting uh, kind of on this portion here coming up and over. Back down this way, and we'll also be replacing the galvanized line in that roadway. As well as doing some drainage improvements with curb and gutter there. And then we also have Pine Ridge, this small section here down at the bottom. And the main driver there is the failing roadway, the drainage issues, and then uh, replacing the galvanized water line there as well. And so for any of the community that's interested into getting into the nuts and bolts of every single Culver driveway, ADA crossing, stop sign. That goes in there, we're going to be doing a virtual town hall event that Kristen has posted. This will be on July ninth, so. Um, it's your opportunities, the community, especially if you live there, to uh, talk about any concerns you have. Um, it's not a redesign, but it is to ask questions and see how we can uh, accommodate these projects best for the folks in the community.
Thank you, Ben. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, first, thank you for thinking of fiber conduit wherever applicable. Appreciate that. Um, on the change to the one-way um, from, from. Two directions to one, has that been communicated to, to those property owners yet?
It's been communicated to the folks that we could talk to while we're there. We were also planning on going door to door. Because there is some variation in the plan sets that we can do. We have to meet the engineering spec with driveway widths.
Okay.
But if folks on that street have a preference of exactly where they'd like us to put it, we can work with them on that. We can talk about some restoration stuff. So that was kind of the real opportunity to go door to door. With every single one, we still might not get everybody, but we're going to try to communicate that. And the main driver for that one-way direction. Was snowplow accessibility and vehicle accessibility. In the winter, we had to choose a direction and this is the safest direction to get up to the top of the hill.
Okay.
And back down as well as uh, the safest direction plow for our plows.
Perfect, thank you.
When we did Park Street, we did that with driveways. With the homeowners on Park Street on the south side of. And that was very much appreciated. I had comments from a lot of folks along that.
Good, and that's our intent is to, to give folks the best that we can, the most we can when we go by their house, so that's.
Thank you.
That's the goal.
Thank you.
Hey Ben, um, I had a question for you too. On the fiber, which I do appreciate as well, um, so the city would own that. And are we, are we just then going to lease back to TDS or whoever that, whoever wants to use it? Well, how does that work?
So we don't have any formal agreement for that right now. I know we've looked at that in the past of how the city wanted to move forward with whether we're going to lease fiber. We have some of those strands available. Um, there was no formal resolution on how. Staff is supposed to proceed with, with leasing that, but the nice thing is, is when we're doing these projects. Rather than digging multiple times, trying to bore it in afterwards, we have the conduit in place. If we want to use it for our stuff, great. If we want to lease it out, great. I've got two tubes in there, so there's one primary and one spare, so it gives us about as much flexibility and it's about as inexpensive. As it can be to put it in there right now, so I'm just trying to think ahead in the future.
Yeah.
It's an additive alternate, so if we don't want to go that route, we don't have to. Um, awarded in the contract, but it seemed prudent to do it in Kelly's and Baldwin because we're starting to now make links between all our major.
I was going to ask you, yeah, so ultimately the vision is like a fiber ring all around the city?
Correct, that would collect, that would uh, connect city hall through PD, pass all the schools to have the option to. Uh, eventually up to the water and wastewater facilities. Um, sixty-seven, actually, that project that is going on right now has fiber conduit in that as well, so there are some gaps that need to be. Uh, achieved, but I'm trying to put it in everywhere we can so we have the option.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, can I comment? Okay. Ben, you know, the only, you know, I don't like many people. But. I really like you because you always think of. What can be better in the future and you always plan for that. And I really like that. I just thought I'd throw that comment and compliment out there to you.
Thank you, that really means a lot to me. I appreciate that. I try.
Yes, Ben, you're the best.
There you go.
Anything else, counsel, for staff? All right, then I would look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreement between the LTD. And the Elite Surface Infrastructure. LLL in the city of Woodland Park and the amount of. Boy, this is hard to say, three million five hundred and seventy-seven thou- thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars for infrastructure improvements on Lake Avenue, Dual Road and Pine Ridge.
I second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Here?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And our last item under new business is item C, agreement between the city of Woodland Park and Costco. Not cost. Costco. Fire protection for the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars for HVAC and fire suppression. In the U-Pass Cultural Center. Ben? You're on stage.
So the last of my big ass tonight. So we uh. A couple of years ago, we.
I'm sorry, did you say asks?
Yeah, the last of my big ass, so sorry. Sorry, I mumbled through that one. Yeah, so for the U-Pass Cultural Center, for those who have been there, uh, Habitat for Humanity did an excellent job of. Putting in some beetle kill and a floor, and I think what Melody has done with it has made it an incredible venue. However, in the middle of summer, it's incredibly hot in there. And so. To kind of fix two issues, what we've done is we have, we designed a HVAC system, which is a dual-feel system. So it's essentially a heat pump and it can be run on either gas or electric, so it gives the city flexibility for commodity prices depending on. What's more expensive and what's not. It doesn't bind us into one, one thing. Um, but then also at the same time to make sure there's not conflicts with the duct work, we also want to do install the fire suppression. Uh, in there at the same time. So this is basically taking a design for HVAC. And then having Costco Fire do the fire suppression design around it, have one general contractor move in and take care of it. And uh, with all the great scheduling that's going on, we're actually planning on doing this work in January and February of twenty twenty-five. However, uh, for those folks in the industry, there's a lot of long lead time items that we have to buy now. And to lock in our pricing, it makes sense to award this contract now and then uh, buy those items, give a pause in the contract time and then finish that. When there's uh, the, the events aren't booking out there, so there's minimal impact.
Good job. Carol?
Um, it. We're considering the agreement or approving the agreement tonight. Um, will there be a supplement to the budget or was this already budgeted for?
The majority of this was budgeted out of our upper funding. There is about a hundred thousand dollars that we'll have to commit out of general fund, but I don't think we'll need to come back for supplemental for that amount.
Thank you.
What kind of fire suppression is currently in there right now? None at all, or?
Uh, none at all. There's, there's the pole alarms essentially.
That answered that.
Counsel, this has actually been in the budget for a couple of years. Counsel, this has actually been in the budget for a couple of years.
I was going to say, thank you very much for finally. Getting to where we can get it done because it's toasty in there.
Ben had to get very creative to get this bid. To where it is, it's uh. We're going to be look very forward to having this done.
Thank you, Ben. Anything else for staff council? I'll look for a motion to approve if you.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Woodland Park and Costco Fire Protection. For the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars for HVAC and fire suppression at the U-Pass Cultural Center.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Here?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That takes us to reports, the mayor's report. I have. Activities and events to start with, citywide cleanup, we heard about earlier, Memorial Park, June twenty ninth, nine AM to one PM. The Fourth of July Celebration and Symphony Above the Clouds will be held on July fourth. Note the change of date for the Symphony Above the Clouds and location at Memorial Park. The old-fashioned Fourth of July Celebration is from nine to three at Memorial Park. And the Symphony Above the Clouds will be from five until. It usually is about nine thirty. When we're finished up, we will not be having fireworks this year. However, we were successful in finding a potential pyro technician. For the future and for Christmas going forward. So that's good news and hopefully the weather will. Cooperate and we won't have fire hazards, so. Again, that's on July fourth. At Memorial Park, U-Pass Historical Society and Pike's Peak Museum Cemetery, Carl, Woodland Park Cemetery on July fourth from one to three. Slish. Splish Splash Olympics, the Woodland Park Aquatic Center, July fifth from twelve noon to four PM. Movie Under the Stars, U-Pass Cultural Center Pavilion, July sixth from six PM to ten PM. Again, Ben's having a virtual open house on July ninth to talk about the infrastructure improvements we spoke of this evening. Woodland Park Wahoos versus the Peak Swim Team Swim Meet at the Woodland Aquatic Center, July tenth at one PM. Proudly sponsored by the Case Advantage at Keller Williams. Tava Blue Outdoor Concert, U-Pass Cultural Center Pavilion, July tenth from six to eight PM. And Park and Rec Youth Soccer and Flag Football Registration Deadline is July fifteenth. Counsel, the C dot update that is applicable to our area. From the last PPACG meeting. This US twenty-four signal signal replacements in Woodland Park at Trout Creek, out here at the stoplight. And then at Aspen Garden and Paradise Circle, I look like Aspen Garden and Paradise Circles is complete. Are they both complete? Now?
It's pretty close, from what I could tell, it looked like they needed to bring the mast arms in. They've got the foundations and everything and the mast arms will be quite a bit bigger, so they may still need to set those and move the lights over. But all of the main impactful infrastructure looks like it's done.
Excellent, thank you for that. Then the Colorado sixty-seven North of Woodland Park Improvements. Is going to, as I said, re-advertise and more funds needed. For that, so they'll be re-advertising the first of the year and then hopefully. Able to fund what we get in bids to do the rest of sixty-seven work that's not happening right now. And then the US twenty-four resurfacing from Divide and West is also planned for twenty twenty-five. It's redundant, but just to share with you all. Counsel, we have some committees. With PPACG that do not have representatives. And so with staff and council, we need someone for the Regional Advisory Council for AAA, which is the Area Agency on Aging. We also need someone with the Commission on Aging. Committee, the Mobility Coordinating Committee, Air Quality Technical Committee. Those. Four. We need representation, they can be citizens. Of the community as well. That's all I have. Of course. Regional Advisory Council for AAA, the Area Agency on Aging. Would you like to just have this?
And if 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 community members are eligible, probably ought to post these on the website and see if there's any interest.
Thank you.
I can do the old people one, but let's see if there's other old people that would like to do it.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Nikai. So the UAC met July eleventh to discuss and direct staff on an updated. Unexplained High Water Meter Reading Usage Ordinance. The current one is from nineteen ninety-three and uses dollar amounts which are outdated. The new ordinance addresses the dollar amount, changes it to be based on a percentage, it also adds a better timeline for resolution. The UAC is looking to, the USC is looking to bring that forward to the council in the next coming months. And then I enjoyed attending CML. Although I came back with a cold.
Yeah, so a bunch of a bunch of us were at the CML Conference in Lublin last last week. And then I can just tell you what the same thing I told the city manager and city clerk is that every workshop that I attended, I learned. Something that was valuable to bring back to this community. One of the. Keynote speakers was Justin Forsett, and if you're not a football fan, then you probably don't know who he is, but he's played for Seattle and ended up with the Broncos. And he, his talk was inspirational, talks a whole lot about resilience and. How you run into obstacles and other things and that most of your growth happens in the dark. He had all kinds of things happen to get. That got in the way of him being successful earlier and he just kept coming back, kept coming back until finally he hit his stride. One of his quotes that I wrote down that meant a lot to me was if you're too big to serve. And you're too small to lead, I thought that was excellent. Also, another idea that I came back with is Brighton has a thriving youth commission. So they have, it's like a youth city council. That advises and gives recommendations to us. And I would like to start something like that in Woodland Park. I think that someone told me this morning that it was that Mayor Randolph was the last person maybe that. Had a mayor's council and met with so leaders, kids in the community from thirteen to eighteen years old. So they can make recommendations, you know, from a youth perspective to us about what's going on in the city. And then I addition to that is maybe some of them would be able to do internships with city staff. Just to get them interested in in municipal government and I know we've got some kids at the high school. One, a friend of mine's daughter just came back from girl state. And she's all fired up about government, she said she finally understands why it takes ten years for the government to get anything done. So that, so that's one idea that I had, I've also, I've had a lot of. Community members reach out to me about the mobile home park near Walmart. Do we know anything about that?
Erin, do you know?
Yeah, do you know, does anybody know anything about the mobile home park at Walmart and whether they're up to code? And I mean, people are concerned about safety.
We'll have to look into that.
Okay, all right. And whatever happened to Teen Court?
So Teen Court is still around in a different capacity, though. We have, it's no longer housed at the police department, it's housed in our municipal court. And Heidi, Heidi Troxell from, trying to think of the agency that she's from, is administering it for us right now. So it's currently still active, it's not called Teen Court, it's called something different now. I can get you more information and report back to you on that.
All right, and my last question is, when are we, do we have a work session, a work session scheduled for the IGA? Or can we schedule one? Can we?
I believe we were planning to have that at the July eighteenth regular meeting.
Okay.
Not as a work session, unless that's the direction.
It's on the agenda for public hearing. The ordinance that was continued a few months ago is on the agenda for council on July eighteen. Regarding the school sales tax.
We did give direction to staff to look into the examples of the three other municipalities that use third-party.
Yeah.
Like we're not. Collection and distribution. And Erin has done that and Erin has some recommendations to bring back to this us. And it's possible that we could. Have a work session to discuss that prior to the public hearing. Again, I I I would like Erin to explain what he's discovered and what his recommendations would be for this community.
Can I make a suggestion? We have this on the agenda for the eighteenth. We can continue from there if we need to, Erin has, is preparing a staff report. To address the the asks of the council.
Correct.
We spoke about that earlier. And then if we need to do more work, we can continue.
Continue, okay, thank you.
And then Councilmember Baldwin, it just came to me, the name of the organization that is administering Teen Court for us now is called Palomay.
I don't know the answer. Heidi is involved at the edge. But she's also. Heidi Yelly, yes. Is that all, Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Jeff?
All right, Parks and Rec Advisory Board met on June twelfth, so I have a few updates from the month of June from there. The during the month of June, Parks and Rec held the bike rodeo, art camps and outdoor community concert and comedy show. Which were all so very successful and well received by the community. Memorial Park has hosted twenty-six reservations so far this month in June. The Cultural Center has hosted twenty events with four of them being weddings. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board is developing an Avenger Open Space Donation Recognition Program. To date, Palmer Land Conservancy has collected forty-six thousand in donations and the city has collected thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five. The board goal is to collect eighty thousand. And last but not least, the Meadowwood Sports Complex Master Plan, Public Open House Number Two has been confirmed. It will be at the Parks and Recreation Office here in the building on Thursday, July eleventh. Drop in anytime from five to six thirty PM, where you can review site plan concepts, three D renderings and enjoy refreshments. If you have any additional questions, check out whatsupwoodlandpark.com and that is all for me.
Thank you, Carol.
In addition to the report that Kristen Higginbotham gave on this weekend's cleanup. The Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee also planted flowers last week in some of the city-owned public areas. And thus far, it looks like they're living, yeah? Yeah, and it's something that the committee is going to readdress, I I hope in the near future. There was a point in time when different organizations sponsored those gardens and the plaques are still there, but. Those organizations were not when we were planting flowers. Kristen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the city will maintain.
I was just gonna ask.
Flower beds, correct? Okay, weeding would be left up to volunteers, but in the past, there have been groups. I I the the flower garden I was working in said Foxworth Galebirth and I. I would hope we could reach out to them and see if 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 we can re-energize that program, I hope that's something we'll do going forward. In terms of trying to form the best way as a veterans liaison for the city council. I during the month of June, I've met with several organizations. I mentioned before that in Colorado Springs, there is a government military engagement office that falls under the. The mayor's office of community affairs and I did meet with the lead for that office at Sally Clark. And many in the community know Sally from her long service to the El Paso County in Colorado Springs. Sally made it possible for me to also attend the spouses, Military Spouse Communications Coalition. Meeting that was hosted by Mount Carmel Veteran Center on the eighteenth of June. And and what a dynamic and very, very caring group of men and women. Who deal with the spouses throughout throughout the front range, to include Teller County. And made some contacts there, but most importantly have asked that we have a representative from Mount Carmel. Come and speak to the city council in the future and talk about what Mount Carmel does, that is a nonprofit. It is not a government agency, although there are government representatives there that do help veterans and their and their families. Then was also able to meet with representatives from the Military Affairs Committee, which is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce out of Colorado Springs. And another. Organization that I was unaware of as a veteran, but have been asked to serve on that Colorado Springs. Organization as a non-voting member, I'm going to confirm that here within the next week. But one of the meetings that that particular Military Affairs Committee holds a subcommittee is the Communications Relations Committee. And that's when all the public relations, I just, I saw Mike Perini, but all the public relations officers. And also representatives of all the military bands in the area meet monthly to talk about. The events that are coming up on on the the five bases that are affiliated or that are located within the front range. And then finally, or actually not finally, I will also mention that. I attended the Change of Command for the Fourth Engineer Battalion at Fort Carson. And if you recall, Fourth Engineer Battalion is our. We have been their sponsor as a municipality for several years. And the types of relationships we've had with that battalion included welcome back ceremonies when they've returned from deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan. And some will remember that during the Hayman Fire, our previous city manager actually was able to. Convince the battalion to use training, training hours and training dollars to to dig. Fire breaks around the city in the Hayman Fire. Having worked with FEMA, I know that that's not exactly kosher, but that is the kind of relationship we've had with that battalion. And I want to make that relationship a little more significant for the community and for the battalion again. And then I will say finally, I received an email this afternoon from Dan Williams. Dan, Dan, of course, is one of our county commissioners and he's also the commander of the American Legion Post here in town. And there was a veteran who passed away very recently and honestly, I only know his first name is Sam. And Sam had absolutely no family in the in the area. He actually lived in tents and empty buildings throughout the county for many years, almost forty as a matter of fact. And was recently taken in by a family in the county and he did pass away last week. There will be a memorial service for Sam tomorrow at Mount Memorial. Funeral home in Divide and Dan has made the effort to bring in a color guard from. I think it's from Peterson Space Force Base, but nonetheless, he will get a full military funeral thanks to Dan. And I will be attending that service tomorrow at one thirty, but. If anyone would like to attend, I know that that would mean a lot to Dan and and mean a lot to our veteran community, so.
Could you say the name, where where is it going to be?
Uh, Mount Memorial Funeral Home in Divide. That's all I have.
Carol, I'd like to join.
Okay, great, I got that text from him as well.
That's one thirty tomorrow.
Fantastic.
George, thirteen thirty.
I had a question for you though, Carol, on the on the maintenance of those flowers now, obviously they're going to get watered. But. How are we organizing any cleanup of that? Because this is, this isn't going to go well eventually, right? They're going to look.
I I don't have an answer for that, I know that's something that the chair of the the committee wants to address at our next meeting. But you're right, in about a week, they're going to start looking like my front yard and it's not good.
I I would say, I I would think that there would be businesses certainly around that area. You know, the areas of the flower boxes that we would be willing to do it, I know we would. So if there's anything we can do to. You know, help you guys or help somebody at least organize or figure out how the heck to do it, please.
I Suzanne, you're again, you're the institutional knowledge, do you recall what happened with those groups? I Suzanne, you're again, you're the institutional knowledge. Do you recall what happened with those groups that did sponsor different flower gardens and actually had plaques erected?
It was a program that Keep Woodland Park Beautiful had, and because Keep Woodland Park Beautiful has kind of fallen a little to the wayside. That fell to the wayside as well. So as Kristen said, they're trying to resurrect that.
The intention that we talked about recently was focusing on the cleanup coming up on Saturday, and our next meeting is the second week of July. And as soon as the cleanup is over, we'll be able to refocus our efforts. But I've already been in contact with Steve Varner from Public Works who really works with the Adopt a Garden programs. And so and also Rob Feltz, our operations manager. And so one of the focuses that I'm bringing to the table in July is to revamp our Adopt a Garden program so that we can make sure that it's communicated well to the public, that we're reaching out for volunteers, and that we have a solid plan for who's doing what to improve that going forward.
Going forward, yeah.
And do reach out to businesses, too. I mean, I I I know two of them.
That's actually something that we're also talking about, and and that also relates to, you know, like the flower baskets. We've also had some inquiries about supporting the medians. And so there's a few beautification efforts that we're hoping to work on throughout the remainder of the year.
Awesome. That sounds great. And the only other, I'm sorry.
Oh, and I was gonna say, if I walk by a flower garden and see a weed, I will pull it, but. You know, they're like.
No, they look good.
The issues coming up are, okay, what's the risk, you know, to the city if they allow people to go out there and clean the gardens on their own? I there there that may have been why the program.
Some some are a little dicey, yeah. The only other thing, the only thing I have, we have DDA coming up. I see Tony's out here. We have DDA coming up Tuesday, July second at seven thirty AM here in the chamber. Officers will be elected, and a good time will be had by all.
Steve?
All right, well, you know, with CML, I did learn a lot. There is a lot of things that I did learn. And actually, I did give a little inspiration to Justin, the former F L, you know, football player from the Ravens and such, because I, you know, told him that, you know, hey, in my twenty years plus of coaching football, that I had five two thousand plus yard runners of, you know, running backs that were just his size or smaller. So that gave him a really good smile. But there was other things that I did learn from the other sections, which were really great. And, you know, I thought the SML did a lot of education for me, and I really look forward to next year.
Thank you. City Attorney, are you still there? And do you have anything for us?
Hi, everyone. I didn't expect to have anything. I just wanted to just quickly mention about it's inspiring to hear all the new council members speak about CML. As you know, Jeff Wilson was a general counsel for about thirty years, and I'm it's it's just a good network to work together. Even the ordinance that one of the ordinance I drafted, you know, came from the Severance Town Attorney who we know and we work with, and it's just a really good, good network, and it was good seeing everybody there at the conference.
Thank you.
Can I add something real quick?
No. Yes, go ahead.
But, okay, I'll just throw this out there. But this is the first time I've ever been able to take a lawyer, a lawyer to the cleaners when we went to dinner.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. All right, council, tonight I have for you a sales tax update. All right, so these are the sales tax numbers from April, which were received in May, and I did want to make just a quick comment about the public comment we heard earlier from Mr. Dion regarding the sales tax. I do just want to clarify, we collect our sales tax a month behind. So for April, we don't collect it until the end of May, which means we can't possibly remit it until the middle of June at the earliest. So I don't dispute anything that's on the documents that were provided to you, but I would say, just to clarify, it always is a month behind at a minimum. Simply because of that fact, we we can't remit it any quicker than that. Okay, so for April, we did see a bounce back from where we were previously. So in March, we did have that that little bit of a downturn. April, month over month, we were at four percent over two thousand twenty-three. So year to date, we are at two point one percent. We've received two million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand so far, which puts us fifty thousand over last year. Slightly below budget at this point because the budget we had projected was three percent, but I do think taking March out, we're going to be in pretty good shape with that lodging tax. It continues to be the exact same trend. We're down about fourteen percent for the year, eleven percent month over month. And if you just look at the the chart here, we are continuing to see the the light blue line is where we're at, and that is very hard to see. I can see that now. You can see that every single month except March, we are over where we were last year. All right. All right. And then I do have a couple of other things. So we were able on June twelfth to get the cog car moved, and it has been placed in its new location over at Centennial Trailhead. I think all parties did a phenomenal job in that. I think it looks really great. Staff is still looking at doing some aesthetic improvements over there, adding some rocks. We need to get some improvements done on the staircase, and we are going to work with the Historical Society to figure out what kind of improvements are needed in general for the cog car to make it the biggest blessing to the city that it can be. In addition.
Erin, I'm sorry, I had a question on that. So what what's the overall goal for the for the for the car itself? Like, are you going to open it up just so people can walk in it, or is it going to be a?
We're hoping to have it float around in space. No.
I mean, yeah.
We, at this point, the cog car itself cannot be ADA accessible because of the dimensions and design of the cog car. So we are looking at making it the most aesthetically pleasing and also potentially have a very nice viewing platform. It looks like Ben wants to say something.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just was gonna add on to the ADA accessibility, the width within the cog car kind of prohibits it from functioning to get a wheelchair in there, and it's tough to build a ramp up in that space to get that done. However, there may be some options for letting folks in once we get the staircase resolved and the rocks in right now, because we need to relandscape everywhere around there that was disturbed.
Okay.
But the the viewing platform's currently available for folks to go see, and the signs went up today.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Well, I also, the city doesn't own the cog cars. It's owned by U-Pass Historical Society.
Correct.
And I know that they have some plans on on its use, but the city, in the meantime, is is providing the assistance that Ben just described, but and and as a citizen, I appreciate that, but it is not ours.
Yes, that's why we will partner with them on a maintenance plan and on what kind of updates that we're looking to do together. Any other questions about? All right. In addition, we also had some fantastic news. Co-Swap, which is the Colorado Strategic Wildfire Action Program. The city, in coordination with the county, have been awarded one million dollars in grant funding for fire mitigation and planning with the goal of mitigation and ensuring areas are protected from fire danger to protect our citizens. There were seven areas identified in our grant application, including Avenger Open Space, which received quite a bit of funding, the water treatment plant, and several of our city water tanks. We are looking forward to getting started on those projects and protecting our community. I'd like to thank the county for their assistance and also recognize our budget manager Kimberly for doing an amazing job on the application and our operations manager, Rob, for putting together the site locations and their efforts and getting this done. So we are very excited and so that that is very exciting. That is all I have for you.
Thank you. All right, we will now be moving into executive session. Captain, could you give us the motion?
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, Section four F, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees, and the following addition and the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, evaluation for the city manager.
I'd also like to tell the the audience that we will be returning here to take action on what comes out of the executive session, so we will be back and we will adjourn here. Thank you.
We need a second and a vote.
Second.
Okay, let's take a quick vote, council.
Thank you.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Please. Steve, are you with us?
And you have your script, right?
I do. The time is now nine forty-eight PM. And the executive session has been concluded. Will all the participants in the executive session please state their names for the record?
Catherine Nakai.
Carrie Baldwin.
Jeffrey Gear.
Carol Harvey.
George Jones.
He Smith.
Erin Vassalotti.
Suzanne Leclair.
If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none, we now adjourn the meeting.
No, no, no.
Oh, never mind, never mind.
Unadjourned.
I'm unadjourning the meeting.
Correct.
For heaven's sake.
We have to do a summary and then a motion.
Thank you. The council met in executive session, and we discussed Erin's accomplishments for his tenure from twenty in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four citywide, and he has done some amazing things in collaboration with his marvelous staff. And the council discussed quite a few of them, and we are very pleased with his performance. We also talked about his priorities for the next period, evaluation period, and some goals that he intends to work on and I'm sure accomplish. The council discussed his accomplishments. He shared with us his desires with regards to his compensation and his contract. And then Erin left the room, and the council discussed what he had proposed. We made one adjustment from what he proposed, and so we will honor the four percent in that's per his contract after his first six months. And the second adjustment we made was a three, a two percent COLA on that four percent increase. And then he asked for a December bonus of five percent, and the council rounded that off to an even number. With that, that is the summary, and council, I would look for a motion for as that was described.
Move to accept the summary.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Suzanne?
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And thank you.
Mayor, this is a public record, and so it will be made available if asked. Thank you, the dollar amounts. Thank you.
With that, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.